Well, good morning, everyone. It is 9:00. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers, and there is also an automatic defibrillator that's available at the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Commissioner Friend?
Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Rogers?
Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, April 27th, 2021, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
My thanks, Sherry.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Motion passes seven to zero, and all commissioners are present in the chambers today.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have two resolutions, Item D and E. Is there a motion to approve and adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Commissioner Friend?
Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Rogers?
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is the consent agenda item, and please note that on Item A, Item A 3, 4, and 5 are going to be pulled from the agenda, but Items 1, 2, and 6 will be included in the motion to approve. All right, consent agenda. Any questions on consent agenda items? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Please note that these items would all come through.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, can you wait till your mic? I think Ron needs to get your mic on. There we go. Thank you.
These items have to do with our vaccination initiative, and they carry the note that federal funds are pending. And I don't know if Joe or somebody has an update on that, but we were doing these in 2020 out of some CARES funding, and then the Congress passed the American Rescue Act, and now I believe there's additional fundings coming. But if you could clarify that for us, Joe, where do these monies come from?
Sure. Jill Lorenz, County Finance Director. These funds and all the funds on an ongoing basis for the vaccination process are going to come from American relief funds, American Rescue Act funds, but it's a different pool of that money. It's not the money that the county is expecting to receive directly from the federal government. This money will go first from the federal government to the state of Nebraska, which to my understanding has an agreement with the federal government that they will receive $120 million of federal government spending, and then they will allocate that on a population basis to the various counties and municipalities in the state. And so we're actually trying to schedule a call this week with the Health Department, County Administration, and the state of Nebraska to talk about the mechanics, but we expect all this money we will be receiving from the state of Nebraska as a middleman coming from the federal government. So it's American Rescue Act funds, but not the direct award to the county.
So I think the population of Douglas County is someplace in the 520s?
Yeah, it's between 30 and 33% of the state. So at that estimate, they should have, you know, at least $35 million earmarked for us.
And do you have any idea in the pipeline where this is, what kind of timeline we're talking about?
I don't have an exact. I know we are working on getting the call scheduled this week, that the people at the state and the governor's office are aware that this is going on, and they want to talk to us directly about the mechanics of getting the money and the amount. So I don't have an exact date, but I think it's going to be sooner rather than later.
One minute.
And the three items that are on here seem to total about $3.5 million minus the three items that are laid over, which is actually a greater sum. So in approving these today, we're not dedicating any Douglas County monies.
No.
Time.
In anticipation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions on consent agenda items? Okay. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda minus Items A, 3, 4, and 5?
Sorry, Madam Chair, we actually do have a Commissioner Mike Boyle and Commissioner Rogers made the motion and seconded.
Okay, thank you. Yep, you're right. All right, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom that would like to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we do have our presentation by Dr. Adi Poor with our COVID update and COVID vaccine update. Dr. Poor, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a short update today, really. Our seven-day rolling average is at 22 new cases per 100,000 today. Just to put this in context, we want to be at 10 new cases per 100,000, so we still have a ways to go. We have up as of last night 69,670 cases since the beginning of this pandemic. 57,264, however, have recovered, and 12,343 still have symptoms or have had a recent infection. When we look at the cases last week versus the week when I talked to you last, we have seen a decrease of 277 cases. That is 19%. We still had a total of 1,186 cases last week, and we need to, again, put this in perspective. But this is the lowest since March 20th. And when I look back at the variants that we were starting to see in our community, that is the time when we saw an increase in the variants in our communities. So as of last week, we now have had identified 228 variants in the community. 191 of them are the UK variant, which we know is the most pronounced in the U.S. 29 of them are California, and five of them are Brazilian. Three that just came in yesterday, and I'm really curious what we are finding on the exposure, because the other two before were travel-related. But when we drill down a little bit more into the variants, I think it is important to recognize that those variants are mainly found in the young population now. That's also the population where we see most of the cases. So 25% of the variants are in those 0 to 19 years old, and 21% in those 20 to 34-year-olds. So we are seeing cases in the young individuals, and those cases are most likely or very often are variants-related. We saw our positivity rate also decline, and it declined to 7%. Just to put it in context, we want that to be below 5%. Our hospitalization versus last week when I talked to you, I was talking about 136 individuals in the Omaha area hospital. It is 112 now. So again, a good trend that we are seeing, but the hospitals are really bouncing at this time, and I don't know if it has to do with short visits, that we see new admissions and new releases often. So 112 in the Omaha area hospitals, 31 of them in the ICU, and 15 of them on ventilators. We have had two deaths in April. That is the lowest that I can remember. So a total death toll now for Douglas County is 691 cases with a case fatality rate of 0.99%. And I like to be very precise on this, because we like to see this number come down. What is concerning to the deaths, these two that we had, one was in their 70s, so that's, you know, we have seen that frequently, but the other one was in their 50s. So that is a young death. Talking about the vaccines, so we have given in Douglas County 365,218 doses. 54.2% of our population, adults 16 and above, have received now one dose. That's 231,533. 34.7% of our adult population is fully vaccinated, or 148,228. I just want to give you some data in regards to the age as well as race and ethnicity. When we look at, and this I'm going to give you for one dose, because my thought is obviously people have received one dose, they will come back for a second dose. To me, that is a good thing. So when we look at race and ethnicity, now our white population that is eligible, 51.8% have received a vaccine. That's 4% more than when I talked to you last week. African-Americans, 32.6% of them have received one dose, but that's only 2.6% of the report last week. In Native Americans, 42.6, a 4% increase. Asians, 51.2%, a 7% increase, and Hispanics, a 40.9% of their population has received one dose. That's a 5% increase. So you are seeing Hispanic population, Native American, but very small numbers in the Native Americans. So Native Americans have seen a 7% increase. Hispanics have seen a 5% increase, and that is really wonderful. I hope that we are going to be able to see that also in our African-American community. When we look at age, it's very interesting, too. The highest increase since I talked to you last time is in the 16 to 19 years old. They have, 28.6% of them have now received one dose, an increase of 8.6% versus when I talked to you last. Then it goes down, of course, as we increase in ages. Many of you are interested how many doses have been allocated to Douglas County, and this week we have 18,700 doses, about 4,000 more doses from Moderna versus last week. Last week, in total, we had 14,700 doses, also 38.3% of what the state of Nebraska has received. We are still having Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine that we are holding on to until we are hearing from the ACIP potentially this Friday what the recommendations are going to be. That expiration date on those Johnson &amp; Johnson is June 23rd. Clinic sites, I just want to give you a kind of a broad overview where we are now. When you really think back when the vaccine first became available, we started to have these five large community sites, and we still have those sites. When more vaccine became available, we realized we needed to have smaller sites. That's when we started the Girls Ink Clinic Saturday and Sunday that is going on with Noah, going to African-American churches. We started to have the drive-throughs now in North Omaha Metro and South Omaha Metro. Heartland Intergenerational Campus has now a clinic most every Monday. Abide has clinics Wednesday and Thursday. The Refugee Community through the Simple Foundation, we have vaccine events there. Korean, we went to mosques. We have Homebound. Homebound, we have now, I think I just took from staff, close to 230 visits that we made with Homebound to administer vaccine. So that was kind of our second tier, I would say. Now, the third tier is what we are seeing, and I think I shared that with you last time. We are seeing some open appointments, and now most of our community clinics have gone to walk-ins. No appointments anymore. And we are starting to provide vaccine now to clinics. We have offered it to all the three healthcare systems. If they wanted it for their clinic, one of them has taken us up. So we are doing two pilots in two clinics that CHI has, and we are starting next week also with schools. We really want to go into schools. We are planning to go in all of the OPS high schools, as well as Millard North, as well as Westside, and Creighton Prep. And what we are also doing at this time in this tier, we are providing vaccine to Orqivax and Total Wellness. They are companies who are doing flu shots at workplaces, so we want them to go back to their clients in their workplace and try to provide vaccines there so that every barrier really can be removed. So you are seeing, we are starting to refine and trying to make sure that we are getting at these hard-to-reach populations. So that's kind of the report I want to share with you this morning. Does the Board have any questions?
I just need to make a quick comment. I did talk to our Director of Corrections, Mike Myers, and he said it was okay to mention that one of those deaths that we're talking about is Tanya Burnside, who was a correctional officer at our adult corrections facility. And as Commissioner Boyle pointed out yesterday, she was very instrumental in the African-American association in coming before this board and talking to us about racism and diversity and inclusion and equity. And so she will be sorely missed from her advocacy role, as well as her role that she served Douglas County so well. So please remember her and her family, and your thoughts as we continue our discussion about COVID and all of the lives that it has taken from us. Commissioner Boyle?
There we go. Dr. Poor, I really appreciate the very thorough report you gave. I did want to ask if, this is a little bit unrelated, and so if it's not relevant, please let me know, but I wonder whether you have any information for people who are suffering from the lingering conditions of COVID, and also whether any of our health systems, Methodist, CHI, or UNMC have programs to which people can apply for help? Do you know, just, that's not necessarily totally in your realm, but I just wonder if you've run across something you could tell us?
Commissioner Boyle, thank you for the question. Yes, there are some things that I can tell you about. Nebraska Medicine actually has, you know, and I don't like the word, a long-hauler clinic.
Right.
They have a team together now that really works with those individuals. Another thing that I see is starting to become popular are those work groups where people really can share their experiences, and on the internet, those work groups are starting to be established. There are quite a few reputable ones, but if it is somebody in our area, I would ask them to get in contact with Nebraska Medicine.
Great. Thank you very much, Doctor.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the report, Dr. Poor. Again, it was very good information, stuff I think we need on a pretty consistent basis, so we appreciate it. Doctor, if a person, and this piggybacks maybe just a bit on what Commissioner Boyle had just brought up, if a person contracted COVID, let's say four or five months ago, eight months ago, 10 months ago, and they continue to experience certain types of symptoms, so there could be stuff that's still occurring in their life. They've lost that sense of taste and smell, or there are, you know, other things going on with them. Are we at the county level? Are we tracking metrics that show, because we've all heard these stories, are we tracking metrics that show that the vaccines, more specifically to the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines, when received, are either reducing or eliminating these symptoms? So I know that sounds a little strange, but there are reports, and I've actually gotten some pretty decent information from cardiologists and a couple of other folks that said, "Look, when these things are happening and these vaccines are delivered, we're tracking information, and we have significant understanding that some of these symptoms are actually dissipating." Now, that could be wrong, and we might not have any metrics, but I just wanted your, I guess your just high-level input on that.
Commissioner, I probably have the same knowledge as you have in this regard.
Oh, I doubt that. I think you're way up here.
No, 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 no. In regards to this item, I think the reports are just coming out who are starting to indicate that, but we do not have any metrics at this time who would follow this.
One minute.
And who would make it reputable therefore. So I can bring it up with the state, because the state is really the one who is looking at this data now very closely in regards to, are there breakthroughs of the vaccine? Meaning people have been vaccinated, and then they get infected again, and they have symptoms, and so on. So they are starting this project yet, so I can bring it up to them. Thank you.
No, thank you. And the reason that I was curious, I think that there's a method to my madness, I hope there is. I've heard from a lot of folks that said, "Hey, look, I already have it. I'm not getting any vaccines. I don't need them." Well, they've got symptoms, they even said that, and then they might be a little, so the point is, they might be a little bit reticent to actually go through this process for a variety of reasons. I think from a...
Time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you, and thanks for the report, Doctor. I'm glad to see that we're making some steady progress on the vaccine front. If I heard you correctly, we are at 34% of the population fully vaccinated? Is that correct?
34.7%.
That's great.
And that is as of last night, so that doesn't include what we vaccinated yesterday. So I'm sure we are at 35% today as we speak.
That's really good. And the national percentage is significantly short of that, right? We're ahead of the national?
Well, it depends on, and you need to look very carefully how they are looking at it. Some of the reports I see from CDC, they are looking at the total population, and we are looking in the state of Nebraska, we are looking as a population, it's those 16 and above. And then when you look at the New York Times, they are using, again, another marker. They are saying the adult population, of the adult population, which is 18 and above. So everybody uses a little bit different metrics. I do think the metrics that we are using, 16 and above, is probably the correct metric, because those 16 and above, they can get a vaccine at this time. Those below 16, they cannot. So why would we include those in the measure?
Right. Yeah, I see that the Times has it at 40% nationally, but the CDC has a different number as well, correct?
Yep, yep. They are looking at total population. So in our case, it would be 527,000. We are, as the denominator, we are looking at this time at 421,000.
Okay. And speaking of the Times, I check it daily, because they have a pretty good dashboard there, as does the Health Department, and they keep listing us, Douglas County, Nebraska, as extremely high-risk level for COVID-19 infections. What should we be doing that we're not doing, or what should we continue to do that maybe people are slacking off on a little bit?
Well, I think all the prevention. I think the gathering in large crowds, we should not do. We should be very diligent still in wearing masks. All those non-pharmaceutical measures still have to be in place, especially with these variants. And I do think we are seeing, you know, understandably, people are getting tired of it, and then you have now, you have now the group who is vaccinated, who feels rightfully so. There may be...
Thank you, Dr. Poor. Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Thanks again for everything you do, Dr. Poor. So just a few kind of bullet questions. One is, I understand that the vaccine is to be used to really decrease the deaths and hospitalizations of citizens. At the same time, do you have any information on cases in those people who have already been vaccinated?
We do have, we are getting some data from the state. Not so much local data, because the numbers are still very, very low, but I would expect that there are going to be vaccine breakthroughs, yes.
Okay, and then those, again, I'm assuming, just because of what these vaccines are supposed to do, it will help decrease hospitalization and death rates, but at the same time, so I guess I'm just curious, those who have, I think we feel this little shield up once we have our vaccines, but I'm wondering if people are still dying from it, even though they've still had their vaccines that we know of? I guess the second question I have is, can you define long haulers, and are you separating out the death rates and long haulers versus those who are acutely sick with COVID?
Yeah, long haulers would be those who are over a month. When we call them back after two months, they still say, you know, "I still have symptoms." Those would be long haulers. But you could also say somebody who is in the hospital for more than a month or so on, they, in my mind, would also be long haulers. So over long periods of time, more than a month.
And then do you know if the death rate is separated out for the long haulers versus those who are acutely ill?
The death rate is separate. The death rate is based on their certificates. The long haulers, we don't have a measure. Besides what I'm sharing with you, those who have recovered from those who have had COVID, those would be, some of them are long haulers. But we don't have any metrics for the long haulers.
Got it.
And we don't have any good metrics, Commissioner, for those that are hospitalized for long periods of time.
That makes sense.
One minute.
And then also, hospitalizations by age group, you mentioned that the younger folks are the ones who are getting it the most. Do we know if the young folks are getting hospitalized, too? Do we know if the young, young folks are getting hospitalized too?
So what I'm hearing from children is that, yes, they are seeing more adolescent in their hospitals. But we don't have numbers, no.
I see. Okay. And then the last thing is, you mentioned going into the high schools. Is that to vaccinate students 16 and up? And then I'm sure we have to get parental consent for that.
Yes, yes, to both. They need to bring a consent form and they need to bring a parent or a guardian with them.
All right. Thanks for that, that bullet point hammering I just did. Thank you, Dr. Poor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions for Dr. Poor? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just following up on a couple of things, Doctor. The positivity rate in Douglas County, I think you reported as 7%. And I'm seeing other numbers that show it at 11%. Is that due to the same who we're counting that we mentioned in the, in the vaccination thing? Different, different entities seem to be counting different populations. Is that right?
That's correct. You know, some of them are counting the people and some of them are counting the tests. So if you have been tested five times, when you under test, you are in, they are five times. If you are looking at person, you are only in there one time. That's what you are seeing. We are doing it, we are doing it on our dashboard in both ways so people can see it person by person or test by test.
I see that. So total in Douglas County, we have 69,621 cases. Or basically, one in eight people have tested positive in our community. And as far as deaths, we have 691, which is one in 827 in our, in our community. Those numbers are, I think, agreed upon by everybody because you report those directly to CDC, right?
Correct. Those are, those are reported the same way everywhere.
So to get to a reasonable positivity rate, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, we need to go from whether we're at 11% or 7% to some lower number. What would that number be?
The WHO from the beginning said it should be below five.
Below five. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Poor? Again, thank you, Dr. Poor. And have a good rest of your day. With that, we will move on to committee reports, the first being our Budget Finance Committee. Is there anything from Commissioner Morgan or Commissioner Friend?
Joe, and got a few things we need to be doing. But and some of our departments may be coming before the board in the near future, and those will be on the schedule. Madam Chair, person. And it's great to see you back here and in control of all of us.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
I was going to speak about the next committee.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to mention that we're having a meeting today at noon with a few people, Mr. Leahy, for starters, and Patrick Bloomingdale, and our money guy, Mr. Lorenz, and myself, to discuss the outline, I guess I shouldn't say it that way, to talk about branch offices and the cost of operating them and so forth. Looking forward, we spend pretty close to $1 million a year in rent. And we have for many years. And it's pretty staggering when you look at what we've spent for rent. So I want to start discussing other, other options. And I spoke to Jerry Leahy, and he has a lease that I'm not real excited about. It's a 10-year lease, replacing the South Omaha State probation office, which is not the best facility, with another office that is much better. But I don't like a 10-year lease. I don't like us getting locked into that. So he was going to have it on the agenda, matter of fact, today, and I asked him not to do it. So I just want to give you a kind of a, a warning that that's coming down the pike. I think we need to talk about those expenses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next is Human Resources. The weekly personnel report as presented, unless there's questions. And then our legislative report. Just a couple of highlights. The budget is moving through the legislature, and it should be on final reading today. The largest appropriation in the two-year biennial budget is a 2% per year provider increase in the DHHS and juvenile service providers amounting to an 83.5% increase. They have budget increases in the cash reserve from 412 million to 763 million. And the county juvenile service aid is funded at 6.8 million plus for fiscal year '21 and '22, and then 6.820 plus for fiscal year '22, '23. Please note that that is a reduction of about 250,000 each year. And then one I had forgotten to mention last week was the advancement of LB487, which is a mental health parity bill. And again, Commissioner Boyle and I had some exchange over that, and we're very happy to see that that moved forward. So with that, we'll watch, keep watching the budget proceedings and any of the taxing bills, capping bills, 3% bills that they have. We'll watch to see if there's any movement on those. And we'll report back next week. Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you for that update. I appreciate it, particularly the numbers. I wanted to ask, you know, some time ago, I asked Joe Friend, or Joe Friend, there we go. Joe Lorenz.
I know, I knew one.
It's back here. It's back here, yeah. Anyway, so Joe Lorenz, to prepare a paper on what it costs for the, for the justice system, including the city of Omaha and Douglas County, so that it could show to the, to, just for general information about what it costs. And I think it was close to $300 million a year. And that includes the Omaha Police, the Douglas County Sheriff. It includes the corrections, the judges, the bailiffs, the whole, the whole shoot and match. And somewhere along the line, you know, there, there are a little bit, there are efforts to create things and to raise things and to lower things. But it's never really done in unison. And what I'd like to do is to ask Joe to get us a little bit of history and go back to 2010 and tell us what the cost of the justice system was in 2010 and what it is today. And show that to the senators because a 3% increase is going to be a killer. I don't know what we do with people who are arrested by the Omaha Police if we don't take them to the correction facility. I mean, I just don't understand it. At one time, we were pressed for money, and I talked to the corrections people, and I said, maybe we'll start taking them to the facility by the airport that's run by the state. And they said, well, do what you have to do. So boy, was I ever tempted to bring that to the county board. But we need to get realistic about these lids that are being placed on. We were, in the legislative conversation, there was talk of how we are tricking taxpayers and all this sort of thing, and sending out postcards to tell them that we're going to raise their taxes. Well, you know, we have contracts that we have to honor. We have employees who are covered by bargaining agreements. And we need to treat them fairly. And they need to be paid fairly. And the comparables are what they are. So I'd like to see us prepare some information and try to get the information to the state senators so they can take a little hard look at what reality is. So I'd appreciate doing that and have the Chair of the County Board sign, sign a letter to send that to all the state senators. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. With that, again, we will keep watch and report back next week.
I have my hand up.
I know, Luis, I'm getting there. We have a hand up on Zoom. Luis, go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, this was for the Finance Committee. 3306 Birch Street. Maybe the clerk can answer this. I have, I've been wanting to review your funds or the budgets that you have. I understand that the county has like over 50 funds. And that's a lot. But I don't know where to find that otherwise than going to the Civic Center, talking to Joe. But I could, you know, maybe review it on the website if it was available. Is, is it on the website? Your various funds?
Danish, Douglas County Clerk's Office. Well, we used to have it on the website, but the traffic showed it was not a lot of people going there. And it's a lot of work. But nonetheless, I can provide that to you. And if you and others are actually using it and it's just not showing up on our reporting, I'll gladly put it back on the website. But I got your email, Luis. I'll, I'll send you, I'll send you something. If it's not what you're looking for, then I can work with you.
Great. Let's do that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Luis, this is Mike Boyle. If you want to look at the agenda and you go down to the, let's see, it is under Finance, and it's Agenda Item, Roman numeral 7, point A1. And you go down there, it's a budget report. And then you open it, and it does give all the daily expenditures, budget comparison summary by organization. And it gives each of the offices, what the salaries are, the variance and so forth. It does give quite a bit of information. And then later on, it gives information about some of the operations, what the, the money and various accounts are. That may give you a start to try to get a handle on what it is you want to get your, the information about. Just a suggestion.
It's an attachment?
Well, it is. It's under, it's under that Roman Agenda Item, Roman numeral 7, dot A1. And it's the budget report, and it comes from the Finance Director. And it's information that does give you some start, starting points to ask questions, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right. With that, we do have need for an executive session for legal advice and litigation. I'm assuming we're going up to 9:03 for that. Okay. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? And then we'll adjourn after that. All right, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.